Full guidance of Scott Howitt. I present Eileen Fernandez and Cody Wood. Cody Woody. I love that name. Anyway, after their time spent in Tallahassee this year, they are prepared to brief you on the outcomes. You may begin.
They wanted to shout. We wanted to shout. You guys wanted to shout.
Good afternoon. We would like to begin by thanking the members of the board and the superintendent for their efforts to improve public education and funding for Orange County Public Schools. It is true that we have some challenges ahead of us, but our success will far outweigh them due to the continued hard work of the board, the superintendent, district office personnel, and our schools. So as we go into the budget, here we go. The general budget information for the state. As you can see, there was a 0.85% increase in unweighted FTE. There was a 2.25% increase to the FEFP statewide. If we want to go more into detail about the FEFP statewide, it was a 3.22% in new state funds. It was a 1.02 in local funds increase. Safe schools, there was no increase. Reading instruction, as you can see, there was no increase as well. Per student funding for the state, 7,296 average per student funding around the state. And there was a 1.39% average increase in per student funding when the governor called us back, called both chambers back for the additional $100. Next slide. What does this mean for Orange County Public Schools? The FEFP, there was a 1.22% increase in the unweighted FTE for Orange County Public Schools. There was a 2.74% increase in K-12 total funds. If we go all the way down, per student funding, there were, uh, Orange County Public Schools is at $7,230.25 per student funding. And there was a 1.5 increase in per student funding, which will have us at $106.86. Fiscal year 2017/18 budget impact. If we look now, the increase of total K-12 funds was $38,863,366. Within that pool, we had to add in, or subtract, I'm sorry, the cost of the new student, which left us at 17, which was subtracted, $17,612,889. Also within that pool was the FRS rate increase was $3,571,53, which leaves us at $17,676,424. For the General Appropriations Act, which was supplemented by HB 3A during special session, as you can see, the fixed capital outlay was $50 million for public school maintenance and $50 million for charter schools. For the VPK program, the base student allocation for the school year is $2,437, and for the summer, it was $2,080. There was no change for the 1617 school year when it came to digital classroom allocation. It's $80 million to provide digital services and computerized testing for our students. For the Florida Retirement Systems Rate Bill, for the regular class employees increase, it was a .40%. Senior class employees increase, there was a .94%. These are the two classes that make up all of the, all of the FRS employees, school districts. Increase will cost OCPS $3,430,886. Sorry if I said that wrong. Let's just go on to this. Onto the substantive bills. HB 50, Educational Options. This pretty much expands access, access to the Gardner Scholarship Program. Expanding the pool of eligible applicants by including additional disabilities. Expands and authorizes the use of the scholarship funds for horseback therapy, art and music therapy, and other services. It also revises the Florida Tax Credit Scholarship Program. It increases the amount of transportation scholarships for a student who chooses a public school outside of their district from $500 to $750. Moving on. Autism Awareness Training for Law Enforcement Officers. This pretty much requires the FDLE to establish a Continued Employment Training, CET, on the recognition of the symptoms and characteristics of autism.
The next bill we'll go over is Senate Bill 80, which deals with public records. Currently under the Florida Public Records Act, an individual can sue governmental entities for failure to provide access to public records. In the last few years, there have been lawsuits that have been filed against certain governmental entities, including school boards, that have been, the lawsuits have been filed solely to recuperate attorney's fees, and there may not be a legitimate reason for that particular public records request. So the changes to the Public Records Act that were passed during this last session had provisions to address that particular problem. So now, the bill requires a court to award attorney's fees and costs to a plaintiff who sues an agency to enforce a public records request only if the court determines that the agency unlawfully refused to permit a public record to be inspected or copied, and the complainant provided written notice identifying the public records request to the agency's custodian of public records at least five business days before filing the civil action. In addition, the bill also provides, the court must determine whether the complainant requested to inspect a, or copy a public record for an improper use. If the court determines that it was for an improper use, then the actual governmental agency gets awarded those attorney's fees and costs now. So we are able to recuperate those four frivolous lawsuits.
HB 293. This bill pretty much requires the Florida Department of Education to conduct a comparative study around the nation with high-performance students, grades 6 through 8, regarding reading and mathematics, which will be based on the state's performance on the National Assessment of Educational Process test. Findings will be reported to the governor, the State Board of Education, the Senate President, and the Speaker of the House by December 2017. The bill also deletes the requirements for students in grades 6, 7, and 8 to complete a career in education planning course as part of the requirements for middle-grade promotion to high school. HB 371, pretty much expands students with disabilities transition to include from school to home and community. It's pretty much allowing students to take the device from one school to another or
The next bill is the Senate Bill 436, which deals with religious expressions in public schools. I know you guys heard a lot about this throughout the session. I'm going to go over it in a little bit more detail because this is going to have some implications on our policy. So if you'll just bear with me for a little bit. The bill creates the Florida Student and School Personnel Religious Liberties Act. It attempts to mirror current federal law, but it goes, in some instances, a lot further than what federal law actually allows. We do have some concerns about the constitutionality of this particular bill. The bill requires a school district to treat a student's voluntary expression of a religious viewpoint on an otherwise permissible subject in the same manner that the school district treats a student's voluntary expression of a secular viewpoint. In addition, it provides that a student may express his or her religious belief in coursework, artwork, and other written and oral assignments free from discrimination. Specifically, a student's homework and classroom assignments must be evaluated regardless of their religious content, based on expected academic standards relating to the course and curriculum requirements. In addition, a student may not be penalized or rewarded based on the religious content of his or her work if the coursework, artwork, or other written or oral assignment requires a student's viewpoint to be expressed. Furthermore, it provides that a student may pray or engage in religious activities or religious expression before, during, and after the school day in the same manner and in the same extent that a student may engage in secular activities or expression. It also provides that a student may organize prayer groups, religious clubs, and other religious gatherings before, during, and after the school day in the same manner and to the same extent that a student is permitted to organize secular activities. The, the bill further goes and further provides that a school district may not prevent a school personnel from participating in religious activities on school grounds that are initiated by students at reasonable times before or after the school day if such activities are voluntary and do not conflict with the responsibilities or assignments of such personnel. This is a deviation from federal law. It furthermore requires a school district to give a religious group access to the same school facilities for assembling as given to secular groups without discrimination based on religious content or the group's expression. And it provides that a group that meets for prayer or other religious speech may advertise or announce its meetings in the same manner and to the same extent that a secular group may advertise or announce its meetings. It also requires a school district to adopt a policy that establishes a limited public forum for student speakers at any school event in which a student is allowed to speak publicly. The limited public forum policy requires the district to provide the forum in a manner that does not discriminate against a student's voluntary expression of religious viewpoint on an otherwise permissible subject, provide a method based on neutral criteria for the selection of student speakers at school events, activities, graduations, and ceremonies, and also to ensure that a student or speaker does not engage in obscene, vulgar, offensively lewd, or indecent speech, and finally, to state in written or oral form that the student's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district, and deliver the same disclaimer at all graduation events and any other event at which a student speaks publicly.
HB 493 requires the Department of Transportation, DOT, to review and measure the success and the cost of establishing a uniform system for the designation of a safe school crossing location within a one-mile radius of all schools, and requires the DOT to report the findings to the governor and the state legislature.
HB 989, which deals with instructional materials, will also require a policy change. Currently under state law, I'm sure you know that a portion of funds that we received under the instructional materials allocation has to be used to purchase materials on the state-approved list. In addition, I'm sorry, what the bill does is it basically changes that criteria now, where you have to purchase all of your materials from a state-approved list unless you meet certain exceptions, and I'll just go through those in a minute. The bill also requires there to be a process for public review and comment on instructional materials, not on the adopted list that's used by the district. So if we deviate from that list, we have to basically have a public hearing over it. The bill makes changes to current law in other ways. It now allows not just parents, but any resident of the county to provide evidence to a school district that certain material does not meet state standards, contains prohibited content, or it's not appropriate. It requires the school board, again, to adopt a process for contesting that material, and that process has to include an impartial hearing officer. And it requires a school district to provide access to library materials upon requests, and also requires the district to keep a list of the purchased materials on their website. In addition to those other requirements, all materials purchased using state instructional material dollars must be on the state-adopted list, unless, if the district wants to deviate from, from the materials that are on the list, they have to show that those materials are aligned to the state academic standards and be consistent with the course expectations and descriptions. It also eliminates the requirement to use 50% of state dollars to purchase electronic or digital materials, so that requirement is now no longer applicable. And it clarifies that a, that a school district is responsible for the content of all material made available to students, even if it doesn't, even if that material doesn't fall within the definition of instructional materials.
HB 1109. This bill pretty much revises private school students' eligibility by allowing a student that is a non-FHSA member of private school to participate in interscholastic, interscholastic and intrascholastic activities at the school where the student could choose to attend in a, uh, sorry, let me start over. Choose to attend in accordance to controlled, to the, to the controlled open enrollment if the school has not reached capacity, which is, for us, 90%, as determined by the school HB 1239. This bill creates the Cameron Mathew Act. If any of you are not familiar with it, this act is named after a student in Fort Myers who was struck and killed by a driver who failed to see the school bus extended stop sign. Under this bill, a person who fails to stop for the school bus, causing or resulting in a serious bodily injury or death of, of another person, is required to serve 120 hours of community service in a trauma center or at a hospital. Participate in a victim's impact panel session in a judicial circuit, or attend a driver's, driver improvement course approved by the Department of Highway and Safety and Motor Vehicles. Also establish an additional fees and penalties for failing to stop for a school bus resulting in a serious bodily injury or death of another in passing a stopping, a stopped school bus. So Eileen and I worked really hard to see if any of those funds, if anyone goes around the school bus, to see if those funds can get redirected to our SafeWalk program. Hopefully, a senator will carry it next legislative session, but we are hoping to have that in there this one, but hopefully we'll have it in the next one.
And now we get to the really fun policy stuff. We're going to go over now the medical use of marijuana. This also is going to require a, a new adoption of a new policy. So first of all, that policy is going to have to have a procedure for allowing a student who is qualified, who's a qualified patient to medically use his or her marijuana in school. It currently does not require an accommodation to, for the use of marijuana in a place of education or employment, but it does not specifically prohibit it in the, in the bill. There are exceptions that are made for administering medical marijuana to students within the bill, so even though it says you're not supposed to have it in an educational facility, there's an exception made for students that have a prescription and a license to, to be able to take medical marijuana. And then lastly, it has a provision in there that any medical marijuana treatment center that cultivates, processes, or dispenses cannot be located within 500 feet of a school, except if the local jurisdiction determines that the location promotes public health, safety, and general welfare of the community, it will be permitted within those 500 feet. The next and last bill that we're going to go over is House Bill 7069, which is the, the train that came our way and kind of ran us over. It includes a variety of provisions related to pre-kindergarten through 12 education, including but not limited to assessment and accountability, school improvement, charter schools, facilities, personnel, curriculum, and funding. The way I'm going to do this is I'm going, you'll see that I've only got the headings there, and I'll just fill you in with information that I have here because I didn't want to give you 50 slides of information. So to start off with, we'll go over the Title I funding. I think a lot of you are very, very familiar with what, with that provision. But basically, what it does is it provides that after providing the Title I Part A funding to schools above the 75% poverty threshold, school districts have to provide any of the remaining funds directly to all eligible schools, including charter schools. It also provides that prior to the allocation of Title I funds to eligible schools, there are some things that a school district can hold back. So it can hold back 1% for parental involvement, an additional 1% for the reserve that's required under federal law, necessary and reasonable amounts for administration, which includes the district's indirect cost rate, but those costs cannot exceed 8%, and reasonable and necessary amounts in order to provide homeless programs, delinquent and neglected programs, pre-kindergarten programs and activities, private school equitable services, and transportation for foster care children to their school of origin or choice programs. And that last provision is for the requirements under ESSA. It also provides that all remaining Title I funds must be distributed to all eligible schools in accordance with federal law and regulation. However, there's a light at the end of the tunnel in that an eligible school can use a portion of their funds to participate in discretionary educational services that are provided by the school district. So if we have a Title I school that receives funds, and they want to receive some of the services that we have in the district, they would pay a proportionate share to the district to receive that, to receive those services. So if you had a reading coach, for example, that's a district reading coach and is going to several different schools, that individual school would pay a portion for whatever we have to pay for those services, and that's how we would still be able to provide district-wide services to these schools, and they could pull their money together. Move forward now to the capital outlay funding. Capital outlay funding, as you know, it requires a school district to share local capital outlay millage revenue with charter school, and it revises the allowable uses for, for that money. It provides that in order for a charter school to be eligible for those capital outlay funds, they have to meet certain criteria. That criteria includes having been in operation for two or more years, be governed by a governing board established in the state for two, not three, or more years, which operates both charter schools and conversion charter schools within the state. It used to be a, a three-year, a three-year rather than two that it is now. It must be an expanded feeder chain of a charter school within the same school district that is currently receiving charter school capital outlay funds. It must be accredited by a regional accrediting, accrediting association as defined by the State Board of Education, and it must serve students and facilities that provided, or it may also serve students and facilities that are provided by a business partner for a charter school in the workplace. Finally, in addition to those, a charter school has to have an annual audit that does not reveal any of the financial emergency conditions for the most recent fiscal year for which such audits results are available, must have satisfactory student achievement based on state accountability standards applicable to the charter school, must have received final approval from a sponsor for operation during that fiscal year, and it must serve students and facilities that are not provided by the charter school's sponsor. Moving on to the assessment and accountability portions. The bill eliminates the Algebra II and, of course, assessment requirement. It requires that the English Language Arts and Mathematics statewide assessments for grades 3 through 6 be delivered only in paper-based format, beginning with the 2017-2018 school year, and then after that, all such assessments have to be paper-based for those grades. It requires the commissioner to contract for an independent study to determine whether the SAT and ACT may be administered in lieu of the Grade 10 statewide assessment ELA and the Algebra I EOC assessments for high school students, and those results have to be submitted to the president of the, President of the House, Speaker, I'm sorry, Speaker, pardon me, President of the Senate, House Speaker, and the Governor by January 1st, 2018. And there's also a variety of changes to the timeframe, timeframe for administering statewide assessments and the timeframes for providing results to students, parents, and teachers. And of course, a very, very popular provision, it provides now that VAM is optional for school districts. So that's a very good positive thing there. On the side of school improvement and differentiated accountability, there's been some changes there. It adds to the schools for which the district board must annually approve and require implementation of a new amended or continuation school improvement plan to include each school in the district which has received a D or an F. It expands the early warning system to include schools that serve students in kindergarten through 8th grade, not just 6th through 8th, and revises the early warning indicators to address the grades that have been added. It also provides an educational emergency exists when a school district has one or more schools with a D or F, and frees the schools of contract negotiations. In these cases, the district is required to negotiate with the appropriate bargaining units and enter into a memorandum of understanding that addresses the selection, placement, and expectations of instructional personnel, and provides principals with the autonomy specified under the Principal Autonomy Pilot Program Initiative. It requires that the first full year after the school initially earns two consecutive grades of a D or a grade of an F, the school district must immediately implement intervention and supportive, support strategies. Within that, it requires that by September 1st, the school district must provide the DOE with an MOU that's been negotiating with the bargaining unit, and by October 1st, the district has to submit a district-managed turnaround plan to the State Board of Education. Once that is approved, the district must immediately implement that plan for the remainder of the year and continue the plan for one full school year right after that. Moving on to the Schools of Excellence. The bill creates a Schools of Excellence program to provide administrative flexibility to the state's highest-performing schools. So designation is given to the schools whose percentage of possible points earned in its grades calculation is in the 80th percentile or higher for comparable schools for at least two of the last three years. That flexibility that is given to the administration includes the Principal Autonomy Pilot Program, and it also exempts the school from any law or rule that requires minimum period, a minimum period of daily or weekly reading instruction. Moving on to the Schools of Hope. The bill, of course, creates a Schools of Hope program for persistently low-performing schools. It included an appropriation of $140 million for the Schools of Hope program. Within that $140 million, there are, there's a possibility for 25 traditional public schools in the entire state that can apply for the program and be eligible for the program and receive funds. And if they do receive those funds, they would receive an additional $2,000 per student if they are selected. The process for opening a school by a Schools of Hope operator has been streamlined, extremely streamlined. No school board approval is needed. All they have to do is basically turn in a notice of intent to us. The school board does have to enter into an agreement with the operator within 60 days of receiving that notice of intent. Failure to do so results in the school district having to reduce its administrative fee by 1% for all charter schools. And of course, they have a standard contract that we have to use. If we don't use that standard contract and we deviate from it, any other provisions that we add to that contract will be presumed to be an attempt to limit the flexibility of charters that are, current flexibility provided to them under law. So that's a pretty high threshold to meet. In addition to that, since we're talking about charter schools, there have been some changes to the charter school applications. Sponsors have to approve or deny charter schools, charter school applications no later than 90 calendar days after the application is received, as opposed to 60 days, so now they've given us an additional 30 days. And it provides that space provided to charter schools in various facilities, such as libraries, museums, theaters, churches, colleges, or universities, that have that pre-existing zoning designation, the charter school can go in there without having to obtain any special exception, rezoning, or land use change. So they have, once again, a benefit that we do not enjoy. The categories? Yes, sure. It's library. It's library, museum, theater, church, college, or university. The bill also addresses Florida's Best and Brightest Teacher Program, which is now called the Florida Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Scholarship. It has been expanded now to include principals. So in order to be eligible, the amount of scholarship that a teacher would receive is $6,000 for a highly effective teacher that scores at or above the 80th percentile on either the SAT or the ACT, up until 2020. I'm sorry, yes, 2020, 2021. In that year, the standards change. The highly effective teacher has to score at or above the 77th percentile on the SAT or ACT, so it's lowered it from the 80th to the 77th, or if the teacher has graduated cum laude or higher with a BA, they must have scored at or above the 71st percentile on the SAT, ACT, GRE, LSAT, GMAT, or MCAT. All highly effective teachers for the 2017, 18, 18, 19, and 19, 20 school years will receive $1,200, and that would be in addition to the $6,000 if they qualified for Best and Brightest. And effective teachers will receive $800 during that time period. And of course, the program has now been expanded to include principals. In order for principals to be able to qualify, they must have been a principal of the school for at least two consecutive years, and the school must have a ratio of Best and Brightest teachers to other teachers that is in the 80th percentile or higher for comparable schools. If they meet those qualifications, a principal that is in a Title I school will receive $5,000, and a principal that is in a non-Title I school will receive $4,000. In addition, they also are granted the flexibility that's permitted under the Principal Autonomy To go over the educator certification portion, the bill creates new timelines of when the DOE must issue a professional certificate to a teacher, and it also revises the types and eligibility requirements for those certifications. Supposed to make it, pardon me, easier now for teachers. Going over the curriculum and student instruction portion, as you all know, the bill now requires 100 minutes of recess for K through 5 grades per week and 20 minutes per day, and of course, it only applies to traditional public schools. Charter schools are exempt from this provision. It also requires school districts to allow students to bring sunscreen to school, so we cannot prohibit that. Finally, it addresses the Gardner Scholarship. It addresses it in the same way that HB 15 does, which is what Mr. Woody went through just a little while ago. The only difference is that this makes the allocation of $30 million in appropriations because of the expansion of the program. So that's all.
Members of the board, I assure you, Mr. Howard and our legislative liaisons have very capably created a grid, a chart for staff, so we will have individuals assigned to each of these legislative issues. General Counsel will certainly be working on those that require board policy adjustments or creation. I think it would be an understatement to say there are a few things that have to be adjusted. The commissioner indicated to us she thought there was massive work to be done. DOE is not prepared. The testing alone, converting to paper, there's confusion over whether or not it requires just third grade for this coming year or all grades. They have differing of opinions. So the attorneys up there are looking at it. There'll be rule development and, what do we call them, directive papers. What's the right term?
Technical assistance.
Technical assistance, papers issued from DOE, but that would not be in the immediate future. Chairman, we're happy to answer any questions. Hear your discussion.
All right, board members. Q. Ms. Fernandez, great job. Ms. Woodai, great job. How do you pronounce your last name, Cody? For years, I've wondered that. Woody, right?
Woody.
Okay. It looks like "woodai" when you read it, but I thought it was Woody.
Kodai-woodai.
That's right. Your parents had a wicked sense of humor when it came to rhyming. So I'm back on Slide 4. If there's any way you can get to that quickly, if not, it's not a big deal. I would love it just for future purposes, and I've seen it before when we were going through the budget presentation, if we could add into that slide a line that says required for benefit increases. Or for, I don't know if we can calculate that yet, and I'm sure we'll get that when we get to finalizing the budget, but I just, I think it's important. You know, I got interviewed a lot after or during the last week of the session when the budget was being put to bed, and I kept making the point that, you know, we were actually, I don't remember the numbers now, it used to roll off my mind, the tip of my tongue, but somewhere between $5 and $16 million in the hole were not for the impact, not the impact, were not for the local option village that the voters had voted us. So I just, it would be good to illustrate that in future budget presentations. And then I would just like to know the numbers eventually, and it's not pressing at all, but I don't know if it's possible to generate for me a list, if it's not too much trouble, of how many teachers are eligible for Best and Brightest and other programs and the amounts per teacher. I don't need a listing by names, but I'd like to know hypothetically, you know, 2,000 teachers are eligible for the full X dollar scholarship at a total cost to us of Y. And there was another program in there, not just Best and Brightest, you said, at the--
The teachers? I mean, the principals also now?
Yeah.
It's been expanded, yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to see that.
Okay, we actually have to report those numbers anyway, so.
Great, terrific, thank you. Good presentation, and thank you for all your work on our behalf up there this session. Mr. Howard, congratulations, you've successfully escaped Tallahassee. Ms. Gould.
It's the joint team of Tallahassee's. Yeah, well, first, I do want to thank the legislature on a couple of small points, which will be big points in our lives. Certainly, the VAM is phenomenal, and the core route before this became a train had some really good elements that would be better. One of the things I'd like us to see us work on, I love the pen and paper, or the pencil-paper option, but not solely, because we have already put our entire system through that transition, and while we need that option, especially for some of our students who don't do as well on the technology, that should be a very local, very local choice directed by the school district. So as we kind of pluck things out to have some of those who want to do some corrective measures within this bill, that would be one that I would request. I think it's really important, not only, as the chair pointed out, the cost of benefits, but also to point out a few other things. With the surplus we had in the state this year, had the local millage stayed the same, just consistent, that would have given the state an additional $540 million to be able to put towards teachers and students. In addition to that, if you look at what's budgeted in the Best and Brightest, which in a document that I saw, it's like $233 million, so 540 and 233 million is almost $800,000 that we could put towards recruiting, retaining, and supporting our teacher-student-staff and--
Yeah.
And, I mean, I'm losing my words, I get so worked up. So I think it's very, very important for our community to know that, that, and there is, you know, the House 44 seat is open tomorrow, and the West Orange Chamber is holding a debate, and I'm hoping that question comes up, is if they would support bringing that millage back to the rate that it was, so that we would not be 43rd in the country in our teacher pay. And never mind our support staff. I mean, we're at the bottom of the pile in support staff. I mean, we're at the middle, at least, in the teacher, middle to bottom of the teacher pay. So I think it's really, really important. Okay, so enough of my soapbox. On the, and I know we'll probably get into this, so you may not be able to answer this today, but on the conflict with the religious rules that were, or laws that are going in place, what will happen with the federal versus the state rules? I love the SafeWalk funding, and also with the marijuana, something else I just want to say to the board, this is another reason why we need registered nurses in our schools. You know, we already have challenges sometimes with medications and having parents run in because we don't have a registered nurse who can monitor that, but you start sending things like little oils, and because you don't see the results of marijuana immediately, you think, oh, I didn't give enough, and all of a sudden, you are overdosing that individual. And that has been something very common in Colorado and some of the other states that started with medical marijuana, because it takes two hours to hit your system. So, you know, that's just another plea, again, for-- I had a question on the 8% admin fee with the Title I. When we go to the Hope schools, is there any restriction on the admin fee in their charter school budgets? Can they, you know, with us, we could only take 8% back for this additional funding to help our most disadvantaged students in our most struggling schools. Is that the same equitable in the Hope funding side? Is there a cap on administrative fees?
No.
Okay, thank you. And then I wrote a note that I don't really know what it meant. That's it, that's it for me.
Excuse me, Ms. Gould, did you want me to answer your question on the religious expression?
Yes, if you can, please.
In the religious expression case, the federal law would trump the state law? It would just take somebody to challenge it?
I think the Freedom from Religion Foundation will do that work for any school district. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you. Just an observation that our average per student is even below the state average by $66, so just thought that was interesting. In regard to the EOC and the VAM, I just wanted to still state, anybody who listens to this, is that that Algebra I EOC that was eliminated doesn't negate the requirement to graduate. Which one, two? Algebra II? Okay, I'm sorry, Algebra II. That's still a requirement to graduate, though, correct? The course. No, okay. I thought it was. No, okay. And then performance pay is still in place, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So you get rid of VAM, but you still have performance. Okay. Okay, and in regard to the sunscreen, now, I understood that sunscreen was classified on the federal list of the counterdrugs, and that's why we looked at it as, not a controlled substance, but that the child had to bring in a note, and it had to be dispensed at the clinic. I mean, it was cumbersome at best, so this law can supersede that federal?
Well, certainly, you can have procedures in place on, you know, what needs to happen with the sunscreen. We just can't prohibit a student from bringing it onto campus.
Okay. That was it, thank you.
Ms. Moore?
Dr. Jenkins, this is such a massive amount of changes, and I have every confidence in how you're going to proceed with staff. Do you think there might, maybe through the board updates or beginning of meetings, it would just be nice to be, for us to stay abreast of how the changes are actually working out, because they really are so many game changers? I always wondered if you had thought through how you were going to keep the board apprised.
Absolutely. Ms. Moore, the chart that I mentioned earlier is for administrative purposes, just to track all the work that has to be done on all of the new legislation, and we'll provide that update on that actual chart to board members periodically. And as I mentioned earlier, General Counsel is well aware that there are some policy issues that will be required of the board as well, so we will start that process. But I can't stress to you enough that Department of Education response is this is going to take some time to unravel. And so questions were posed as my folks like Dr. McKelvey and Dr. Jar in the last few days, and their response was virtually a shrug, like, give us time, the attorneys are working on it. That testing, paper testing, is a prime example. Some believe that means third grade goes paper only, and others believe it says, no, third grade does digital, and then everybody goes paper the following year. So they need to unravel it, and they will provide the technical assistance papers for districts to follow. But as early as the last couple of days, they were shrugging their shoulders.
Just one follow-up to that. So in terms of the paper and pencil version, and then the fact that the testing was going to be moved to with the last four weeks of the year, and then if we don't have any guidance from the state, do you anticipate that this, the calendar's going to be adjusted with that in mind, or staying with the old procedures and calendar?
So it'd be hard for me to speak on behalf of the commissioner. She doesn't see how it can be done and the timing that is provided. It's a tremendous investment financially to switch back to paper, for example. And so OCPS is prepared to move in either direction, but we certainly won't foot the bill for that conversion. I wouldn't bet money on it all being settled in the next month. It's going to take some time, and I think there will be an adjustment in what was intended by the language.
So in terms of working on the schedule, does that make it difficult for all your curriculum folks to calendar out? I mean, do we have now to the last four weeks to have them ready, or do we still have to be prepared for so much of the testing beginning in March? And how are you going to deal with that? Because I know that is one of the functions of your curriculum folks during the summer vacation.
So Ms. Moore, we have a Plan A and a Plan B. We will always be prepared for either entity. My guess is the money would have to come from somewhere, and massive production of paper pencil versions of the test. If that be the case, we'll have a Version A and a Version B. We will prepare both calendars.
Ms. Gould?
I remembered what it was. On Slide 18, it talks about the DOT having to evaluate the viability and the cost of establishing a uniform system for the designated safe schools. Where does that leave our relationship, or the SafeWalk? Where does that leave with the relationship with the local jurisdictions? Because I spend a lot of time out there looking at crosswalks and sidewalks and trail systems to try to create, you know, with our local jurisdictions and the sheriff and the local police departments to try to look at that. So do we know how that will flush out?
Well, not really, but basically, right now, they're just required to do a study, so they're not really taking any action.
Okay, okay. And then one other point for the record, that flattening of our funding overall for school systems across the state is while we netted 180,000 students this year with all the new people moving to the state of Florida, and of course, I think we're somewhere around 7,000 students this year, six, seven thousand net, oh, five, five, I'm sorry, I don't want to exaggerate it, so 5,000, that's plenty, students this year just in Orange County, so they need to know that, too.
Ms. Colbert?
So I'd just start out commending you guys again for doing a really, really great job. These two are very dedicated and well-prepared, and did a really great job in the face of one of the most brutal sessions I've ever seen, really, truly. What happened was highly unusual, and you all handled it in very professional manner and kept us up to date. and kept us up to date on a daily, if not hourly, basis at times, so I really appreciate that. One thing that I would like to do is circle back as quickly as possible with some of the amendments and issues that we lost during this process. So I would call them the Simmons amendments, really. So the efforts by Monford and Simmons to repair some of the education policy in the state, I'd like us to circle back to some of those early amendments and initiatives, because we do have commitments from some of the legislators to work on those, as well as corrective action on some, like the paper pencil, I, I believe that was supposed to be an option, and I believe that that got lost somewhere, that it's a paper pencil requirement, because it was supposed to be a paper pencil option. So however that got messed up along, along the road, that's something that we could go back very quickly to try to fix legislatively. And then like Mr. Woody talked about, the, the dollars for the school bus arm violations, and then some other initiatives that we talked about in our Legislative and Communications Committee meetings. I'd like to get those down as quickly as possible, because we'll, we'll get back to school, and committee weeks will be starting up within weeks after that. So I'd like to circle back to some of those early initiatives and see if we can't get those down in our legislative plan, so we can, when we do have opportunities, we can lay the groundwork for those. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Woody.
Ms. Colbert, I can assure you that we are in talks with Senator Torres's office and Representative Eagle's office on the, the dollars that can be allocated to us going around the school bus. So we're starting early on that. All right.
Ms. Cadle?
I'm, to ducktail on what Ms. Colbert said, but to both of you, thanks for a great job. Also, I am serving on a panel on Monday morning on issues for Puerto Rican immigrants, and it's the, is the Attorneys Association for Puerto Rican Attorneys that Tony Suarez is moderating it. Victor Torres is going to be one of the panelists with me. So if there's something that we need to tell Congressman Murphy and Senator, and Senator Torres, if you want to shoot me an email, it's like Monday morning at 9:00 AM, and I'll put the plug in for, this is what we need Tallahassee to do, and see if we can get, you know, and I know we're going to bring up the testing for our children who Spanish their home language. I know that I'm going to bring that up with them, but if there's anything else that you're kind of working on, that kind of ducktails into student achievement with ELL learners, I have that opportunity sitting with them on Monday. Also, to ducktail on what Mrs. Colbert was talking about, I keep hearing everyone's going to fix, you know, everyone says they're going to fix. I'd like to know what they think they're going to fix. I mean, if we can figure it out and start talking to them, you know, what are the, what are the big things they're looking at? Because, you know, oh, yes, it was signed, but oh, yes, we're going to fix it. And really and truly, we only have probably eight or 10 weeks, and they start meeting again. So anything, any light you can shed on that for us would be very helpful.
Well, certainly, I'm sorry. Certainly, we can look to the last-minute amendments that Senator Simmons filed during special session, and that would give us an indication of what he wants to change.
Ms. Flynn?
Thank you. I had spoken with Mr. Woody about setting another communication, not communications, I'm sorry, Legislative Committee meeting, and so then we could really start looking at our platform and priorities. And I would ask that the board members, if you have anything specific that you want them to consider, or for us to consider, if you could send that to Mr. Woody and Ms. Fernandez, and then we can take them sort of as a group and look at that. And, and I think what they'll do also is review our last year's platforms and revise, tweak. We, in our meeting, we even talked about really narrowing the focus and going after fewer, but sometimes you have to read their minds about what's going on. But anyway, if you guys could, if y'all could send them what you think we want to consider, and then we could have a whole list. Thank you.
I punched my button earlier, and I unpunched it so we could get out of here, but I'll just throw one out there that's a little bit crazy, and I'll defer to more expert folks in this room than me, as to why it may be unfeasible, Ms. Flynn, but for years and years and years, and I've never asked us to make this part of our platform, so this may be too far out in left field, I just think it would be so popular with parents if the actual test, along with the test scores, were released on FSA assessments. And if, you know, I know that's always been a problem with the state, you know, because of the.
It's going to be done within three years under the new statute.
It is? Okay, terrific.
Release it within three years under the new law. Is that correct?
Once it's old.
Once it's old.
Yeah, but that doesn't really help a parent in trying to, because, you know, you just, it's, I don't know if you all hear it, but it's the single most common complaint I hear about statewide standardized testing, is we get the score, but we don't know what we need to work on with our kid. And, you know, and the excuse we always get, I think, am I right about this, is the cost of it, but it's a new test every year, isn't it? And I just, and the security, I just, I just, it's one of those problems I feel like is solvable, and I just wish we, the state, you know, boards or school boards would start to advocate for that, because I just think parents want to know, especially engaged parents, and they want to help their kids improve and know what areas to work on, so. All right, anything else, guys? Dr. Jenkins? Good? All right, well, thank you all. With that, we're adjourned. Everybody have a good weekend.